Let's all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Sheedram, would you lead us in a word of prayer?
Yes, sir. Father, we come to you today in Jesus' name. Thank you, Lord, for your love, your grace, and mercy. Thank you for all your many blessings. Thank you for the rain we've received lately. Thank you for keeping your hand on people during the fires of the past several days. Lord, we pray you be with us through this meeting today. Help us make good, sound decisions. Help us keep moving forward with diligence and with hope and with faith. We give you glory for everything that's said and done in your name. Amen.
Amen. This time I'll call the April 2nd meeting of the Hardy County Commission to order at this time. And as we begin today, as Commissioner Sheedram had mentioned, I want to take the opportunity to commend, compliment, and thank our local fire companies and EMS squads that recently responded to the outbreak of fires and our Office of Emergency Management and Dispatch Center for the job that they did in making sure that calls were taken. I know that we did have some problems with being slightly overwhelmed there, but we did have the opportunity to witness the call takers and see the job that they did. And then the outpouring of support from volunteers in the community with donations of water, food, fuel, leaf blowers, rakes, flare, and a whole lot of other things. So thanks to all of those that responded. And we thank you for what you have done. We thank you for what you are doing. We thank you for what you will do in the future. And thank you, because that was something that, as far as I can tell from all the conversations that I had, nobody's ever seen anything quite like that. So thanks to all of our first responders in this recent emergency. Bill Iris, we're going to put you on the seat first today. You are the man.
I ain't got a whole lot to say.
That's very hard to believe, Bill.
It's very hard to believe, but seriously. Bill Iris, Administrator, Hardy County Health Department. I honestly don't have a whole lot to say. I'm looking forward to our groundbreaking for the new health department on April 15th at 11 o'clock. I thank you all very, very much and everyone associated in their efforts. Health department-wise, we're just rolling right along.
TB.
TB. TB. It's under control. It's under control. Actually, if you want me to be honest with you, pets in stores is worse than TB right now. I mean, everybody thinks, well, let me phrase this correctly. Service animals are allowed, but everybody thinks that their little chihuahua needs to go in to the stores with them, and we just get a ton of complaints, which rightly so. But we can't get the stores to cooperate because ADA, they're afraid to ask. So we're looking at a couple of different avenues and a politically correct way to approach some of it. Besides that, we're still giving RSV shots, COVID shots. Still got some people getting sick, but not that bad. And like I say, I don't have much.
Good deal. Any questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
The doctor tells me that if you've had shingles, that you have a less than a 5% chance of getting a recurrence. Is that right?
No. The reason I say that is because we've had people who've had shingles more than once.
Would you recommend the shot then after you've had them?
Yes. Yes, absolutely. But yeah, we've, I mean, I've been there 25 years and we've seen.
I mean, I thought if it's less than 5%, then I don't know if it's worth going after the shot.
No, I would still take the shot.
Okay.
That's easy, wasn't it? But next month, I'll talk to Greg for a minute. I will be bringing our new fee schedule, fees for prevention, fees for service. I'm going to get it to Greg beforehand so you guys can look at it and all, but I will be seeking approval for that at your main meeting.
Do we have to publish that?
It is.
Okay, so it's already published in the paper?
I have it on the Secretary of State website. I have, well, I have the legal notice, so on and so forth. It's going out in the paper this week. It's on my health department website. I don't think we have to publish it anywhere else. It's really not that drastic.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not that drastic.
I just want to make sure we've got that done.
It will bring us in line with the surrounding counties, so on and so forth, as far as fees.
Okay.
I'll call you when I'm ready.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Sheriff Dawson.
Thank you all. We've been busy again this month for our drug cases go. Kind of interested what the call volume was. I guess you'll get to Paul here directly so we can hear what that was. But Will Flynn was sentenced this past month, 45 years old, from Hardy County to 16 years and three months in federal prison for distribution methamphetamine and firearms charges. He pled guilty possession with intent to distribute more than 50 grams of methamphetamine in the possession of a firearm in furtherance of a drug crime. During methamphetamine sale in Hardy County, Flynn showed the buyer an assault rifle. Investigators then executed a search warrant at Flynn's home and found 383 grams of meth in the assault rifle and some cash which was seized. So he's looking a long prison term.
The street value on 383 grams?
I don't even know. It's several hundred thousand dollars, I imagine. That's a lot of meth. But he's got it even after he serves his 16 years and three months. He's going to be on supervised probation for five years after that. So that was a big case. And Anelia Marie, Gina Colley, age 34, Baltimore, admitted to supplying fentanyl to dealers here in West Virginia too. And she pled guilty to charge to conspiracy to distribute methamphetamines in federal court. There was nearly 9,000 fentanyl pills weighing kilograms. That's a lot of fentanyl, were found during the investigation. Yilla Coney and Michael Matthews, co-defendant, worked together out of Baltimore, out of their apartment to sell drugs to more than 10 dealers in this area up here. And she's facing up to 20 years in federal prison. So that was a big hit on her. And also, there's a federal sentencing of Nicole Cosner for a year in federal court. Task force assisted ATF with a search warrant apprehended a convicted violent sex offender from Virginia here in Hardy County. And there's also another plea. Carl Valdez is a co-conspirator, Wesley Carter, and he was pled that he's not been sentenced yet. So those are just the drug cases this past month. And in addition, I just want to thank you all for the raises you all proposed for our people. We really appreciate it and they appreciate it. You know, I really appreciate the support you've given me since I've been in office. And the way the economy is, every little bit you can give helps. And all understanding our new deputies in the academy is doing really well. So it'll be a while before he gets out June, but look forward to him hitting the road.
Is he going to New School or the?
I assume the State Police Academy. Yeah, I like the way they train them down there, of course, I'm not biased. And I just wanted to repeat what you said about. I just want to reiterate what you said about the fire company volunteers did too in this fire situation. We had a fantastic job. You know, we had it pretty easy. All we had to do was just try to get people out of harm's way. And sometimes they were blocking roads, causing a little bit of trouble. But you know, they pretty much managed the whole thing. They did a fantastic job. Do y'all have any questions?
No.
It's too easy this morning.
It is easy.
Thank you.
And Greenwald in here? It's going to snow for sure. Something's up.
We have a request from the DECA for funding opportunity.
I actually brought copies of PowerPoint to handout. You guys can follow along.
And I'll let you introduce yourself when you're ready.
So I'm Anelia Gagnon, and I'm a junior at Morgan High School. I've been part of DECA for three years now. I was a freshman. And we've done a lot of great things recently. My freshman year, I won a state competition, and I proceeded to Atlanta. Last year, I went to the same thing, went to Orlando. And this year is Big Anaheim, California. So we're all really excited about that. However, there's a hefty price tag. So if you go to our second slide, we have what is DECA for those of you that may not know. It is a business organization, or you may call it a club, and prepares emerging leaders and students in multiple categories of that business, such as marketing, finance, hospitality, management. And then you have a high school level, and then there's also a collegiate level. So DECA, I think, is really important to our communities. It helps students to further their ability to think with their feet and also like just public speaking. Because, so the two aspects of our competition are written events. So you can do a predetermined written event, like a sales event, or a community awareness event. There's multiple categories. Or you can do what I do, which is a role play. So you do a 100-question test before you go, and then you show up and they give you this little role play. It's a situation, and you have to figure out a solution to it in 10 minutes and then present it in 10 minutes. So I really enjoy it. It's been a big part of my high school career. So if you go to a third slide, we have, that's coming up, ICDC 2024. So this year, in March, beginning of March, we sent 20 students to Charleston, West Virginia to compete at the Career and Developmental Conference. We had 17 students that placed, which was really good, 17 out of 20. We're really proud of that. However, only first and second place winners continue onto ICDC, making 16 qualifiers. And this year, ICDC is in Anaheim, California, like I said, April 26th to May 1st. But however, due to certain circumstances such as sports interfering or the price tag, 14 Morgan High School students will be attending ICDC. So our fourth slide, we have all of our ICDC attendance. So we have first, in first place, you have seven attendants, myself, Anelia Gagnon, and Human Resources is what I competed in. Martina and Michaela Nazrod, and they had a sales written project. Amber Williams had a marketing communications project. Portland Alt, Savannah Hose, and Ryan Greenwald had a franchise business plan, which was a written project. In second place, we had Alex Miller and Gabe Weiss, which they were in Business Finance. Elizabeth Williams was in Entrepreneurship. McKinley Rashford was in a professional selling event. Nick Fletcher was in an integrated marketing campaign, which is another written project. And Jasmine Baldwin was in a professional selling event. So then down the bottom, we see SBE. We get one person from that because we have a school-based enterprise. I'm not sure if you guys have heard of it. It's the Yellow Jacket Enterprise. We sell like the most, we do engraving, embroidery, all that fun stuff. And because we got gold certified again this year, our students had to fill out like a a long, very long, tedious, I wasn't a part of it thankfully, process on getting gold certified. But we did it, and we pulled through and we ended up being gold certified for the state. So we get to send two students to ICDC with that, however, only choosing to send one because, once again, the hefty price tag. So, next slide. Previous members, we came to you last year, and due to your very generous donation, 10 students were able to gain valuable knowledge in Orlando. Six of these students were seniors, which are all pursuing higher education in college. For example, we have Sarah Witherholt, who graduated last year. She's majoring in Business Administration, and she plans to become a CPA, because we all need those. And then LJ Kessner, who I came to you last year with, he's also majoring in Business Administration. He's actually going to graduate with an MBA in only five years. So these are both very good things for the community, being fostered through DECA. Next slide, Logistics. Here's a little photo from when we went to DECA/ICDC. After we compete, we get like a DECA Fun Night. And this was a photo after karaoke to kind of wind down after competition, before the awards. So between transportation, registration fees, and lodging, each first-place student has to pay $2,250. Each second-place student has to pay $2,900. This adds up to $35,400, which is quite hefty, but we're slowly breaking down at it. So some fundraising we have coming up is a breakfast sale tomorrow. And we have the form, actually made a promotional or two for it. Put it out on all of our social medias, and students were able to go door-to-door to businesses as well. So it's breakfast delivery, indoor pickup, and it benefits the local high school DECA, of course. $10. And then we had our order code, or our two choices, sorry. Choice one was French toast sticks with syrup, and then choice two was sausage gravy, because we all love sausage gravy. And then here's our order form. I came up with that to put out on our social media. Then another fundraiser we have coming up is a dog show, which is the second annual one. This was the last year's winner. She's super cute. See all the cute dogs. And some proceeds, I think, I'm not quite sure on the percentage about that. Some proceeds go to the Western Humane Society, or the Hardy County Humane Society, sorry. It's also a major fundraiser for us. We have Save the Dates and everything. We're expecting to get around $4,000 from this, expecting. So hopefully, we do well. We've been doing business donations. We've been going door-to-door and business-to-business with letters. I have an example of one of those here, asking for donations. There's a spot down here where the business can designate which student they would like to be donated to. These have been really helpful. That's been our major form of communication with the community. And we've been in charge of the yearbook, which I'm actually in charge this year of the senior bios. So I put out Google Forms. Everybody filled those out. Wasn't too successful. I had 20 applicants. So I had to go paper and print out, I think it was 104 copies of like three pages, staple them together, and stick them in each person's senior photos packet, and wrote big ol' top, "Due February 1st." So I got about 80% of the students to turn back in finally. So I'm working on that. And each yearbook that we create and sell, you can go door-to-door selling those, of course, selling to students. You get money from that, and you also get money from the yearbook ads. So a full-page ad is $300, and a student gets 60% of that. Half a page ad is 175, and a four-page ad is 100, of course. All of that, each one of those, the student gets 60% of that. They sell to businesses. Another thing we've been doing is the Hand-Bake an Egg Show with the FFA. Partnered with them. I'm sure you guys have heard of that. It's a big deal around here. And we made $900 just from the ads we sold for the pamphlets. Those were Mark Wood Construction, Cape Valley Bank, and Hardy Telecommunications. So then the last thing we have for upcoming fundraisers is the Yellow Jacket Enterprise, which, of course, is our store. And I just presented at the Board of Education last night. I think I have the funds around here somewhere. But this year, we've made, in our store, to date, $41,625. However, 90% of that goes back in, which is around $37,000. Because we're trying to expand. We're trying, we've had a really high turnover of advisors recently. My freshman year, we had an advisor. Sophomore year, we had a different one. And this year, we have a different one. So we're just trying to figure it out. Our advisor this year, she's doing a really great job, Amy Kreitz. And we're trying to expand. And one way we're trying to expand is through the digital heat effects. So we print out this, it's like a printer. It prints out a template, kind of, and then you go over to the heat press, you heat press it, and it's on a shirt. So it's like the nice shirts that you can see. One way we can expand through that is called sublimation. So that would be another $1,200. And that would make it so you can't feel like the design on the shirt. And we'd also go to make jerseys for our local teams. So we're trying to expand, of course. All the money is going back into the store. I think it was last month, I think it was the 19th, I went to the town council, presented to them, and they generously donated $5,600. So that's also going towards our lump sum. So I've come to you today asking for you to match that, which is $400 each, 14 students. Because last year, of course, you, we got, came here and you guys gave us $4,000 very generously. And that was $400 for our 10 students. So, but anything you would willing to give is wholeheartedly appreciated. Everything helps. And then last slide is your school thank you slide, some photos of our students that we all had competition.
Well, first of all, congratulations to all of you students, and we applaud your effort.
You've been working very hard.
You certainly have. And like I say, I appreciate the follow-up with Sarah and LJ, because they came and presented last year to us. Any other questions?
Do you have, are you pre-selling the breakfast?
Yes.
Do you know like where you're at right now with that?
No, I could, my advisor, Amy, she has the Google Forms. I could let you know.
They hit the courthouse.
Yeah.
Did several people order?
Good.
So we'll be seeing you tomorrow, coming to you hot and ready. Perfect.
You can't do the sausage and gravy, can you?
No sausage and gravy, sir, our clerk.
You did a really great job.
Right, thank you.
Yes. I'd entertain a motion for some level of sport.
I'll make a motion that we support this DECA program and their trip for $5,600.
All right, been properly moved. Second, any further discussion? Hearing done, we proceed to vote. All those in favor, sign five as saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, three ayes. The ayes have it.
Thank you.
And if you would, check with the clerk.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to contact. I'd like to be released today.
Yeah, you'll be emailed or.
Do y'all have an internship, like the CBB or the Chamber?
Be an excellent place to start. Yeah, we do have a chamber, and we do have the CBB. Yep. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, I think we're okay on this. I think this one here for the DECA, I think we've got that, some of that. Yeah, and then the next one, not sure, but we'll see what transpires. I think we've got some of that drug money. Yeah. But, yeah. All right, next we have a request from Big Blue. And I'll let you two gentlemen identify yourselves, even though you need no introduction.
Appreciate that. Thank you. I'm DJ Taylor. I'm a board member of the Big Blue Organization over at Wardensville. Of course, I know all three of you gentlemen, which is a good thing, I guess, or could be bad, depends how you look at it. I do know all three of you, so I'd like to take a moment and say thanks for letting me take a few minutes of your time, even Mr. Ely's time. Once again, I'm DJ Taylor. This is Keith Jones. So we're here on behalf of Big Blue.
I'm the fairly new halftime executive director of the Big Blue nonprofit. I live on Trauveron Road in Wardensville. And I have copies of what we're going to cover today.
Thank you.
Do you want to kick it off?
Give them this part also.
Yes.
What Keith has given you is, first of all, I just want, you all can look at this at your all's free time and leisure by all means, but we gave you an invoice, more or less what it costs, the funds that we do come in, the funds that go out. Anybody and everybody knows nothing's free in this world. On the Big Blue print, you do see a list of organizations that do help us throughout the year to make this possible. Something I want to just focus on real fast, you heard our wonderful sheriff, Mr. Dawson, up here naming off all these drug offenses that keep going on in the county. Places like Big Blue is established to prevent that from happening. Now granted, everybody he named off, I don't believe any of them were a youth. But maybe if we had organizations like this when they were youth, maybe that would help prevent it. One reason I am so heavily involved and took the position as one of directors, I was not exactly the best kid growing up, and I did get in a little bit of trouble. And I do believe if we had something like Big Blue when I was younger, it may have helped. I can't say for sure it would, obviously. But if we'd have had something like this in the Hardy County area, maybe perhaps many of the people that I know that did go down the wrong path. In my office there at the church, I'm a local pastor at Walnut Grove, I have my senior coffee mug in my office. Four people in that mug are dead now from drug overdoses or drug-related fatalities. I'm 42 years old. I'm not that old, man. And we have that many already from my generation gone. Drugs are running rampant in this county. You don't need me to say that. Our sheriff will tell you all about it. Drugs are a terrible issue. Can we stop everybody? No. Can we prevent one? Hopefully. Big Blue is an organization that was established for the youth. It's a great organization. I've had the privilege of leading one person to Christ myself. I have spoken there many times. Some of the funding that we go through, and there's an introduction on there, you know, Teen Center located in Wardensville. We serve Wardensville, Baker, Rio, Mathias, Moorefield. We're a 501 nonprofit established in 2020. We have a core team. We have a team of directors. It's meant for seventh through 12th graders, or preferably 13 to 18 years old. Plus, we do several events, Christian music concerts. I was actually a chaperone on two of them. That's very interesting when you take 20 kids to a concert.
Is that, I was going to ask you the number. Is that a regular 20 number?
The one we did over in Clearbrook, I believe is what it was called, we had a ton go over for it. Now, we did one at the Hampshire County Fair. They had Ryan Stevenson, and we only had like 10 students go. I figured it buried. I just wondered if it had some kind of an average. Alleghany County Fair this year is having Ann Wilson. I'm going to it, and I know a handful of students are going to go to it also. We are very blessed and fortunate to get a bus now. So we can provide transportation for several of these students. We go to the Overlook at Quarter H. We pick them up, but you might tell me a little bit on this one. Where all we pick these kids up at? Anyone I know of is the Overlook, because I try to buy it myself.
Right. We do that. Do that at request, Baker Corner Market, H&amp;T Market. We tried running up to Rio for a period of time, and there wasn't enough interest to keep that going. But we also went to the Michael W. Smith Concert at the Apple Blossom Festival in Winchester a year ago. And it's nice because we have this 14-passenger bus. And just being in the bus and transporting these young people, it's just a great way to facilitate fellowship and friendship. And so we'll be doing more of that, too.
Always very supportive of the officer and my theory is if we save one kid from the drugs, they're well worth the money.
There's an old parable of a man walking along the bank or on the beach, you know, he's throwing starfish in, and another man walked up and asked him, like, "What are you doing? You possibly can't save them all," as he threw one in and said, "I made a difference to that one." And that's kind of what we're doing here today, is trying to make a difference for one student. Everybody's on this core team. Our board of members all have different objectives. We all have different backgrounds. Like I said, I came because I don't want to see a student go through what I did. I'm not proud to say it, 20-some years ago, I actually reported upstairs now and then to the probation officer. I don't say that with pride or a smile on my face. I say that because I was a lost teenage punk kid. It is what it is. I went through, it's no excuse, and I lost my mother. And alcohol was very rampant back then. Luckily, we didn't have drugs and meth back when I went to school, or I'd have probably been doing that too. But I've seen some of the troubled kids. We have a sign-in book when you come. We try to keep track of who shows up and who don't. We've had over 130 different students show up since we've established this, that have actually signed in. And you know, as I do, kids don't listen. So you have 130 that signed in, you got another 60 that never signed in. So roughly 200 students. We've impacted in the last four years. Our annual operating is around 75,000. We did hire an executive director this year, which is something all of us on the board. We needed somebody to take charge. You know, I'm a full-time farmer and a full-time pastor and serve on a few other boards in this community. I don't have time to do the crossing the Ts and dotting the Is. That's why we hired this gentleman forward, which we hope we don't run you off in the next year or two.
It's going well.
But, you know, we also pay him. To make this short, we got a lot of people here, and I'm sure they'd like for me to hurry up and get out of the way. Big Blue is a great Christ-centered facility. And my heart goes out for a lot of these kids. I meet with a lot of these students. I still speak at several recovery groups in the Tri-County area. I was a troubled youth. I was the kid who needed this. I didn't have transportation probably to go. I ain't riding my bike to Wardensville. We have a van. We did buy a security system, put on the van for insurance purposes. Hopefully, we can get some money to get that reimbursed. But you two gentlemen, I've known for a long time. You both know I was a troubled kid. Especially you, Mr. Workman, unfortunately, you're aware of all my ups and downs. But you can also testify, hopefully, that I've turned around. Yes, I was on the downhill slope, but I've learned from my ways, we'll say it politely, because I know this is being recorded, and I'm not gonna criminalize myself. Thanks. But no, we're doing good things over there on a serious note. We're reaching students, that should be our primary objective, to keep these students. I don't ever want to come in here and hear Mr. Dawson reading off that list or whatever he had, and all of a sudden I hear a name go across, like, "Man, I was a kid, I used to have a Big Blue. Where'd it go wrong?" Because we have done more to prevent him from going out, from reaching that lifestyle that we try to prevent him from reaching. So on that note, I'm here requesting forty-two thousand dollars to be over a three-year period. I know that sounds like a lot of money, but it takes a lot of money to make this a successful operation.
I know. Um, so, and I do have a question, and something I thought maybe you should have done is list the board members on here, and maybe you should say who the board members are, but just one moment, I wanna say something about that, just for a full disclosure. I do serve on the board of this, or I say that. So, and if there is a vote, I'll abstain from it, but can I participate in the discussion related to the?
Yeah.
I can participate in the discussion but not vote, right?
Absolutely, you can make the motion or second it, and then abstain from voting.
Okay, okay. Um, so, I was totally abstained from that part, I'll just.
Done the other thing, you know, just a three-year commitment.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha. Um, do you wanna say who is on the board?
Of course, y'all know Mr. Steve Sheetrim's on the board, me, Daniel Taylor, Coach Wade Armour Trout from Morefield, Steve Shook, Chris McDumery.
Shanda Walker.
Shanda Walker.
Susan Evans.
Susan Evans. Is her husband also on the board? He just comes to the meeting now.
Pastor Oakley.
Pastor Robert Oakley of Wardensville.
Not finished, right?
One more, he's a real bigger dude, he don't make it to all the meetings because of his leg.
Yeah.
That's not the best way to describe somebody, I know that.
Mike Funkhauser.
Thank you, Mr. Funkhauser. Bigger dude, don't make it to all meetings.
So, you got a ten-member board? I think it's nine, I think it's nine members, I believe.
I believe it's nine, the president don't vote unless he's a tiebreaker, no matter if it's a four-to-four tie, then he will speak up. But, no, I've been a board member for, this'll be my third year, for the first year I wasn't aboard, and then I was asked to join in after speaking to some of the youth.
If I could say something about our funding request, and I moved to Wardensville two and a half years ago. I retired from the Army Corps of Engineers, I was working at the headquarters in DC, and really liked Wardensville. I started volunteering with Big Blue two years ago. And I head up the bus ministry, scheduling, typically driving the bus on Saturdays, and then being there Saturday evening as one of the adult volunteers to run things and keep an eye on the teens that come out. I've read through the opioid settlement MOU, and I get the gist of it, and we tried citing some parts of the MOU that we think are relevant to this request. The allocations, I wanna, you've got a better handle on this than we do, I'm sure, but I saw that there were separate allocations for the town of Morefield, town of Wardensville, and then Hardy County. So, this is a, well, we're in front of the Board of Commissioners, this is a Hardy County request for you. We weren't really sure how to package this, to ask for one-year funding, two, three-year. So what we came up with was the forty-two thousand dollar request over a three-year period. Sounds like that may not be workable. That would pay for half of my salary for each of those years. It is half-time, I'm paid about twenty-four thousand dollars total, so it'd be twelve thousand per year. We also are in need of a new HVAC system for the Big Blue building, which is owned by the fire department, operating under a lease. And currently, we have a couple of window air units for air conditioning, and then electric baseboard heaters that are really inefficient and pricey, and it takes all day to heat the building up in the wintertime. So, we've got a couple of quotes on what would probably be a heat pump split-pack unit for heating and air conditioning, ten thousand dollar cost. And then we need a new camera monitoring system for the inside and the outside of the building. That's a really important thing sometimes.
Wouldn't they be eligible to get current grants direct to?
Yeah.
Yes, they will, absolutely, they will be, yeah, yeah. So, you know, there's the.
That's what you need to do. No, no, I mean, I'm not, I'm in favor of giving what you need here today, but I'm just telling you that for extra.
You know, because basically, rough estimate, seventy-five percent went to the foundation. That's the foundation that's been created, twenty-five percent. These are rough numbers, it's a little different than that, came to the county. So that's what he's, they're also, in addition to this, in addition to county money, there is a foundation that's been set up. It has its own executive director, and, you know, yeah, there will be grants available there. I wanna, you maybe are gonna get to this, Keith, but the organization, from my time in it, has done a lot of things. The organization created a committee for hiring, Keith. That committee created, you know, a job responsibility list, had an interview process. I think one thing that will happen over these next, the additional thing that the committee and subsequently the board did following that, he is, you know, he has a three-month, it's basically a three-month trial basis, because the organization only has, you know, so much funding, and, you know, to make sure everything was going well, there'll be a check, there'll be a evaluation, you know, at the end of that three-month period. The organization is working on a financial control policy. So, the organization is doing good things, both in the community, I mean, the organization has a core team set up that is, handles the interaction with kids, you know, and they have their own system, they have their own meetings. And then separately from that, there's the board itself, which handles the finances and the organizational part for the organization. But it's doing very good, I mean, just to think about what Big Blue has done up to this point, they took a building in Wardensville, that building was, it should have been torn down, it looked like, you know, and now it's, now it's actually usable by youth in the town of Wardensville. It's really, it's really a good organization, and they have volunteers, every single week. I'm not trying to steal your thunder, Keith, you may be.
No, I'm done.
Maybe you wanna say all this, trying to hit, you know, like, the really important points, 'cause, you know, it's here. Every single week, volunteers come out to work with the youth that come in.
Four to five adults.
Four to five adults come out every single Saturday.
From four to eight o'clock.
From four to eight to work with youth.
Do you have someone, I know Steve be quite capable of this here, but someone within you to really dig around and look for grants that?
That's actually part of his job description.
And tell him the, before he began being paid, actually, he got a five thousand dollar grant from Marshall University.
Because that's what it's gonna take to keep Blue do good.
Yeah.
And one thing, one of the events we did here a few months ago, and just to let you know, we had students from Cumberland, Kaiser, Morefield, East Hardy. I had a bunch of them from Cumberland show up. We did a volleyball tournament at East Hardy High School. I don't know how it got established or who let us in, but we did a big old volleyball tournament, and we had like seven or eight teams. And we literally had students from, Potomac State College brought a team down. They smoked a bunch of foreign boys. Tell you that right now, they weren't playing, playing, I mean.
They were out to win.
Yeah, 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 I'll never, I won't see me out there no more. And Keith played, I have pictures of him.
Not very well, not very well.
I agree, but I didn't wanna say that. You were there, and that's part of, you know, we do, we have several things coming up this summer. If we do get some funding, we like to do it to students, and kinda like the young lady from DECA, you know, everything, it's hard for a student to provide either transportation or finances. If you go to a two-night youth conference, you know, outside of Huntington, you used to have the YEC Conference, Youth Evangelism Conference, and, you know, I helped with that for several years to another church or organization, but it costs roughly, even then, eight hundred dollars for a kid to stay overnight and go and forfeit them. Everything was included, but there's a lot of things we could do with our youth, and I think that we could get a lot more students to come in. If we told them, like, "Hey, we're going to Pittsburgh for the United Conference, if you wanna go, just have your parents fill this out, you can go," in a story. And I feel that our numbers would honestly just double, Mr. Workman, double, if we had more of a financial backbone to support Big Blue, so.
And that's, that's one of the goals for me in the next several months, is to up our attendance. Also, I have quite a bit of grant writing and grants management experience. I've done other nonprofit work, and in fact, we have another application in the pipeline now through the United Methodist Foundation of West Virginia. I worked with Pastor Oakley on that, and we're requesting twelve thousand dollars through them for about a one-year period, so.
I see your first request here, if I'm jumping ahead here, let me know, there's eighteen thousand, and basically, most of that's dedicated to kind of physical facilities or support for the executive director. Am I reading that correctly? For year one?
Twelve thousand would be, right, twelve thousand, that would be half of my pay, and then half of the HVAC system, and half of a new camera monitoring system.
We definitely gotta get the cameras fixed on the bus, especially for insurance purposes, you know.
Right, oh, yeah.
It's just like any kind of Hardy County school bus, you know, we need to all monitor the students, monitor the adults, I mean, just.
Yeah, the bus and the building.
Yes.
Yeah, we have cameras at the building now.
I think, I think what we've got, you know, we've received some of our opioid settlement funds, which is where I'm thinking that we'll fund this out of. But programs, too, I think, you know, any programs that you have that might need special attention as coming for, keep us, keep us as a local source in mind for some of that programmatic support. Because I think, you know, you've seen what we've done with DECA. Obviously, they've put a lot of time and effort into what they've accomplished so far, and then this is kind of the icing on the cake to get to this national competition with those students, and of course, that's keeping them engaged in a positive development activity. And we're certainly happy to support that, for sure.
We'll keep you in mind, for sure.
And so, this one going forward.
You entertain a motion?
I would entertain a motion.
I will make the motion that we support him for the eighteen thousand this year. And also, make the note that you just have to come back next year, I guess, and request each year, because we can't do.
Give us an update.
Absolutely. The county commission can't put future county commissions.
And that makes perfect sense by all means, and plus, you know, I know we're not supposed to gamble, I'm just saying, you know, take the gamble here, give us the eighteen thousand, if you see we're doing good, perhaps do it again. If you see we're not doing something correctly, back up and punt.
Do you second that?
I would certainly second that. Any further discussion? No other discussion, no other questions, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, signify as saying aye. Aye, two ayes and one extension from Mr. Sheetrim. The motion carries. Good luck.
Am I dismissed?
You are dismissed. Thank you all very much.
Make sure we come back and get reports on this.
I don't mind doing that, but.
I get a little weary having the sheriffs at the time.
No doubt, you walk down, like, "Oh, he's a sheriff."
Ah, yeah. Derek, we'll get you on the hot seat next. Good morning.
Can I speak just for a second? Lila Spitzer is here from Mountain Park. I have, she's under me, but I have her paperwork. So, I don't know, so she's present, because I didn't know that you were going to be here. Can she take that?
Yeah, we'll, we'll work her in after we see Derek.
I was gonna say, I'll step out.
No, no, you're right there.
Derek, I'm director for the ambulance authority. So, total for the month, total expenses for the month of March, one hundred ninety-four thousand, four hundred fifty-one dollars and eighteen cents. But I did give you the breakdown, because it was one hundred nine thousand, nine hundred and eleven twenty, plus the eighty-four thousand, five hundred loan payment. Total revenues for the month of March, again, two hundred and thirty, or two hundred thirty-one thousand, eight oh three. But if you remove the amount for the equipment purchase, it was more in line with normal, which was one forty-nine, five thirty-nine, and ninety-eight cents. That came from the fee account, and then other incomes, thirty-two thousand, one hundred ninety-six dollars and forty cents. Oh, no, that was services, sorry, and then other incomes was fifty thousand, sixty-six dollars and seventy-one cents. That included the drawdown from the COVID, the last of the COVID fees. As far as building or vehicles, all units are currently in service, so we don't have anything to report there. Same with the building, equipment, Stryker was able to complete the repair for the newest stretcher. It has been placed back in service, so that was a six-month ordeal. I think it started out as a structural issue, but then I'm not sure what happened to the board. I think what happened was when it caught, it jerked one of the wires that went in, and I think it fried that computer in there. But they were able to get it repaired, and it is back in service. We will be updating our tablets soon. Yeah, I see that. So that's supposed to be tablets, not table. So when this happens, we'll be moving to the FirstNet account for the HCAA, and then we'll be terminating the current account, or the current agreement that we have with the sheriff's department. Initially, that was created, COVID, we were doing the testing, we needed it. At the time, it took a little bit longer to set up your FirstNet accounts, I think it was like six weeks or something. So the sheriff's department let us use theirs, so we'll be able to move from that to our own accounts. We did receive six portable radios from a county grant, Company Forty-Six spearheaded that. They were able to secure a lot of equipment, as far as radios go, mobiles, portables. We did, we only got six, I think we were aiming for a few more. So, in speaking with the other county EMS agencies, we are looking with both Twenty-One and Company One to find grants, funding options to add a few more to each agency.
How many more do you think you need?
Off the top of my head, I know us personally, we'd like to have four, at least. But then I talked to Wardensville, I wanna say they maybe need three or four, and then I forget how many Twenty-One said that they could possibly need, so. I can get you a better count. Currently, I have Nathan looking. I can get you a better count. Uh, currently I have Nathan looking to see what we can find, maybe to fund that additional purchase. Under additional items, the audits for twenty-two is complete. Um, twenty-three is getting finalized. So we are hoping to have the report in hand next month to distribute. We have become a member of the Emergency Medical Services Advisory Council, so NSAC in the state of West Virginia. So this allows us to be more up to date and have more involvement at the state level with what's going on as far as EMS goes. Is, is that the board you sat on or is it?
So I sat on NSAC board.
Yeah.
And I don't know, so now, uh, Nathan is attending with me this next.
Well, yeah, we both are.
You are as well? Okay.
Yeah, on the eighteen.
So there, you're, no, but I'll, I think, um, he became a mem, that we became a member of, uh, the other agency, right?
Coalition.
What's your coalition? Because you have to pay a membership fee for the coalition.
Yeah, well, we've done both.
And you have that?
NSAC and the coalition.
Okay, okay, okay.
Um, so, oh, this is neat. So we've been assisting nine-one-one and Red Cross, uh, with smoke detector installs. We kind of offered up our services since we're staffed twenty-four seven. Uh, it's a little easier when they come in. I know there was a surge, um, over the last several months. So we were able to knock out over thirty smoke detector, smoke detector installations, in the, uh, East Hardy area. Additionally, we now have a request form on our website. So individuals wishing to have smoke detectors installed can go submit a form online. And then once we receive it, we can forward it to Paul, um, the Red Cross or. I think the way it's going to work is we'll get it, we'll distribute it to Paul, and then Paul get it out to the appropriate, uh, agency for that area. And then he'll work with nine-one-one as far as, you know, getting smoke detectors and.
Do we still have smoke detectors ready to go if requested? Okay.
Um, also, I was gonna say, if you wanted to pull it up, you can look at it. It is active. Um, if you go to our website, uh, go under contact. There's, so if you go under contact, there's smoke detector program and then also on the homepage under community or services, I forget. We left the button. But Wendy, if you, you can actually, I think, go pull that link and then you guys, uh, can put it on your website. The idea is to make it as easy, as easy for the public to do as possible. And then the board of directors voted at the last meeting to allow for the creation, uh, for two additional full-time positions. Uh, I submitted that report, I think, back in December that said we were running about one and a half to two employees short. So this will bring us up to full staffing. So the positions were created or added, I guess, to help decrease the overtime overage amounts. Also to combat the shortages when part-time employees exceed the number of allowable hours and to hopefully provide, uh, consistency to the staffing model that is currently in use. With the additional hours incurred, um, staffing, Wardensville.
Have you had any trouble finding qualified applicants to fill these positions or?
So the way we, traditionally, the way we've done is, so we pull from our part-time list to fill, um, our full-timers. So it's kind of a seniority based. Um, so we don't, we won't have any trouble filling the full-time spots. Where we run into trouble is the, it's the part-time positions. We find that, well, usually in the later part of the year, they've exceeded their allowable hours. And then also, uh, the way the scheduling is right now with the additional hours in Wardensville, we find out, uh, Saturday or Sunday for that week. And usually if they're part-time, they're working somewhere else. So it gets difficult from time to time to try to pull somebody in. Uh, as far as everything else, I believe that's it, unless you all have any questions for me.
What's, what's anticipated? Like, so we have the March two thousand twenty-four, you know, the statement of activity, like, so those two aren't on there yet. What, what would that salary wages look like then? You know, once those two hires are made.
Um, we're, we're not adding hours. Uh, so it's gonna actually, in theory, it should decrease.
Okay, because there's gonna just, it's gonna be an exchange for, uh, like overtime?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, we have, we're not.
This could stay the same, even with those additional hires?
In theory.
Basically the same. Okay.
Now, some of it will come into play because there have been hours we haven't been able to cover. Um, but for the most part, uh, it shouldn't, it shouldn't fluctuate a whole lot because we're not adding additional service hours. We're just adding the people to fill that.
Got you. Okay.
Um, oh, I was also supposed to ask, uh, the.
We need an E M T and family court.
Oh. So, uh, the fee thing or the salary enhancement?
Yes. That's on the agenda here in a little bit.
Where's family court?
Downstairs in the basement. One of the advantages of. Having them here at the, uh, meeting. Ma'am, we will hear your request here this morning.
I'm Lila Spencer. I work at Mountain Heart. I'm an administrative assistant there. And for those who don't know what Mountain Heart is, um, we take providers and make them state certified. And we help pay for childcare. That's pretty important. Like, we need childcare and childcare is expensive. And my C E O, she just called me and asked if I could get the month of May proclaimed as Community Action Month. Community action, that's fair for the community, obviously. They want the community to thrive. And then for May tenth, they want it to proclaim that as Provider Appreciation Day. Providers are pretty important. Like, we have to work and for those of us who have children, young children, need somebody to watch them. And childcare is expensive, so. It's one way to show appreciation to them. And I have the proclamation right here.
I was looking to see, I, I think I've got it here. This is for the, uh, the one is for the sixtieth anniversary.
Yeah.
And Community Action Month proclamation. And the other is the photo release form.
I wasn't sure if I had to bring that or not.
Okay. And media release form.
Yeah. My C E O asked that I bring that. I wasn't sure if it was.
Alrighty. And, uh, I'll just, I'll read this real quick so that everybody has some idea. Whereas Community Action has made essential contributions across the nation for sixty years, inspiring a spirit of hope, creating opportunities for millions of people to be a part of the American dream and improving communities. And whereas Community Action remains committed to the nation that creates opportunities for all people to thrive, build, build strong, resilient communities and ensures a more equitable society. And whereas Community Action is a robust state and local force connecting people to life-changing services and creating pathways to prosperity in ninety-nine percent of all American counties. And whereas Community Action builds and promotes economic stability as an essential aspect of enabling and enhancing stronger communities and stable homes. And whereas Community Action strategies and, and innovative solutions evolve as the needs of individuals, families and communities and cities, suburbs and rural areas change. And whereas Community Action is experienced in advancing opportunities by coordinating federal, state, local and private resources to achieve results for people and communities. And whereas Community Action insists on community participation and involvement, ensuring that all sectors of the community have a voice and will be heard. And whereas Community Action is recognizing sixty years of innovation, impact and providing proven results for America. Now therefore, I, David Workman, president of the Hardy County Commission, uh, do hereby proclaim May twenty-fourth as Community Action Month in recognition of the hard work and dedication of Hardy County, West Virginia Community Action Agencies. In testimony thereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause to be affixed the great seal of Hardy County to this, on this day, this, this, for the second, uh, Thursday of May, twenty twenty-four. And, uh, am pleased to present that to be moved, by this commission to go forward recognizing a Community Action sixtieth anniversary and Community Action Month. And it's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Anything else you'd like to share?
I guess we have the Provider Appreciation Day. Do you want to read that one?
I will. I don't know that I have, do I have that one in my pack? Yeah, we can do that. All right. Uh, there's nothing further on this. We'll proceed to vote, uh, on the Community Action sixtieth anniversary and Community Action Month proclamation. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Three ayes. The ayes have it. Now the second one. Which is, uh, proclaimed by David Workman, president of the county commission on behalf of the commission to designate Provider Appreciation Day as May tenth, twenty twenty-four. Whereas Mountain Heart Community Services, Child Care Aware of America and other organizations nationwide are recognizing childcare providers on this day. Whereas childcare has provided a safe nurturing place for the enrichment and development of millions of children's, children nationwide and is a vital force in our economy. And whereas the pandemic, uh, illuminated how indispensable childcare providers are for the well-being and economic security of West Virginia's young children, families and communities. Whereas childcare programs are, which are most likely small businesses, run and staffed predominantly by women, continue to recover from the health and financial hardships stemming from the pandemic to meet the needs of more families. And whereas West Virginia recognizes that childcare has been and continues to be a lifetime, a lifeline for families, communities and the economy. As such, it has provided much-needed support to providers to help sustain the viability of childcare by issuing payment for enrollment versus attendance and offering grants and professional development opportunities. Whereas the future depends on the quality of the early childhood experiences provided to our young children today. Support for high-quality childcare represents a worthy commitment to our children's future. Now therefore, I, David Workman, president of county commission, on behalf of the county commission, hereby proclaim May tenth, twenty twenty-four as Provider Appreciation Day in Hardy County and urge all citizens to recognize childcare providers for their important work and how valuable they are for our communities. I would entertain a motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Three ayes. The ayes have it. All right, I think I've got a copy, copy and I can do this right now and pass that to the clerk. Because I suspect he will want copies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, uh, do you have the prosecuting attorney's in-house revision, Mr. Clerk? Okay. Could we, uh, see if we can get ahold of him or the assistant prosecutor? Uh, in the meantime, uh, I would entertain a motion to reappoint Greg Greenwald to the Potomac Valley Transit Authority Board.
I have that paperwork also.
Okay. Properly moved and seconded to reappoint Greg Greenwald to the P V B T A board. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Three ayes. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Mr. Clerk, I see on the items for action here also that we are to designate a commissioner to represent the county commission as a whole for a, an upcoming magistrate hearing. Uh, can you elaborate further on the specifics of that?
We would say it's probably not necessary because, uh, she increases the designated, uh, agent for the commission.
She is our.
In case you're needed or a commission is needed.
Okay.
I'm making a motion. Can we appoint Mr. President, says the parent of representative, if needed.
Second. All right. It's been properly moved and seconded, uh, that the president represent the county commission if needed, uh, at this magistrate hearing. And it's for ambulance feet case, I think. That's correct. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Three ayes. The ayes have it.
Morning, guys.
Good morning.
Understand I have an in-house budget revision?
Mr. Prosecutor, I see on the agenda here that we have an in-house budget revision for your budget.
Yes. I, I, I didn't even know about it, to be honest with you. But Orin, yeah, yeah. Yeah, Orin, Orin talked you about it, but, but I, I guess we're moving some money for travel.
Okay.
We, we, we've had more travel expenses this year, especially with, with some of my pending litigation going on, which, and that, which I know the county knows is finally behind us. But, uh, that, that's the main need for it. And we still have to go to prosecutor's conference in, um, in June. So that, that's the main need for it. Yeah.
Do you remember how much that was, Mr. Clerk?
I think, I think it was like two thousand or three thousand dollars or something we were asking to move.
I couldn't remember the amount.
Yeah.
But we'll, we'll see if it's there. If we get the amount and we'll proceed to move on that.
Will you be available after Paul at the end for executive session?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. I'll be here all day. Yeah. Brighter days ahead for all of us. Yeah.
Paul Louise, I'm gonna put you up next. Because we all want to hear the, we all want to hear the numbers. We are waiting with.
What type of numbers you got for us, Paul? Good or bad?
Just for your F Y I.
Yes.
The Congressman, many sponsoring a grant workshop. And I've already got the information to administer.
Okay.
Coverage not only fire police, also, also emergency management, et cetera.
Good.
It is good. It's really good.
Good.
Thank you. Will she be able to, will she be able to attend, did she say?
Okay.
And electric officials.
Right.
I, I couldn't remember. Can we go ahead and, and move this?
In-house.
Right.
In-house, in budget and the amount will be?
Whatever the designated.
Whatever that amount is that we can't find for travel. All right, it's been properly moved and seconded that we go ahead and approve the, uh, in-house budget revision for the prosecutor's office. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Three ayes. The ayes have it. Motion carries.
I thank you, guys, and I'll be back. See you, guys, here in a little bit.
All right, thanks, sir. All right, Wendy, county coordinator. Oh, no, Paul, you go. Paul, sorry, you go. I'm going down the list and I, I backed up. Give it to me, Paul. Give it to us. We need your report. We need your report before we get to Weppe.
Paul Lewis, Office of Emergency Management, nine-one-one, dispatch, monthly report for the month of March. Under nine-one-one, um, I think you saw a bill for a lot of stone that I've had to pay for to dress up the road going up to the new tower site so they could get the crane and the building and stuff up there since we've had a lot of rain and stuff. So that's what the bill was for. The tower should be still up there and the building should be delivered at least by this week. And they should start stacking it. And I need to go in and make sure that it has, that has been done. Um, they will also be getting electrical inspection and that electric line we're into the site underground is where the conduit is already laid. So then they'll have to get with the electric company to do that. I have not had any more contact with T-Mobile. He was supposed to have, I think, their engineer contact me. So I might have to get back with him on that, uh, and see where that's at. Andy, I think, was the one we talked to on that project and the stuff. So I'll try to get with him and I'll also try to make contact with the other sale companies I had talked to before, which was, uh, mostly, I think, A T and T on that. Current, uh, my current dispatch is the next job with family and the calls for the fires and stuff that started. that started on Wednesday, March 20, and I am still working on getting information out of contact force services. Supposedly, they did surveys and are doing surveys on the number of structures and type of structures that were damaged or destroyed on that. I'm getting requests mainly from First Energy wanting to know total acres destroyed, type of structures destroyed, and all that type of stuff, and it's gonna be a while before that stuff is available.
Do you have any idea of the numbers of acres that burned?
They still show a little over 8,000 for us. 6,000 and some, I think, within the Oechrund area, which was part of the Forest First, Forest Street, and actually, the cost of that, they are showing for the National Forest Street was like 2.1 million for that fire.
Just that one?
Just that one. Plus, they had the one over in Virginia. One of those was 2.1 million.
You say cost like cost to do what they did?
I guess that, and I don't know if they calculated the amount of timber and stuff damaged too or not, maybe. But that's what they just showed on the recent report, and that Oechrund is 100% contained. I think they still have one in Virginia that's not totally contained yet, that they're fighting on that.
That was real interesting that we actually have two, the northern group and the southern group that have interests in our county, and it was difficult to get the communication back and forth between the northern group and the southern group and Forest Service. And I know that confounded some of our fire companies.
Right, and if you notice, I attached on the third page a list of what we could keep track of as far as the number of companies and stuff, or companies that were in here helping fight the fires. So it was close to 40 different companies that we were aware of, which doesn't include the number of volunteers and stuff that showed up to help fight the fires from out of Virginia, Maryland, in local area, too. So it'll be a while. I'm trying to get those figures and stuff on those. Call volume for the month of March, I had 657 calls. That came in 911 Center, law enforcement, DNR had only three calls, the Hardy County Sheriff's Office, 244, Moorefield Police Department, 187, and Washington State Police had 51 calls. So actually, the state police bumped up a good bit there during the last month, because they're usually in the 30s. EMS had the following calls, West Hardy and Service had 107. ACAA had 84, and the Williamsville Rescue Squad had 31. So the calls from east and west are pretty close as far as number of calls for different sides of the mountains. The Fire Department had following calls, and I didn't list all the fire companies, of course, they're on that page, but Cape Valley Fire had 30, Cape Valley Fire Company had 32, Mathias Baker 25, and Moorefield Fire Department had 41 calls. And like I said, I've got those different agencies on there and stuff. We had 22 calls, went to Department of Highways, and a lot of those was probably when we had the winds and stuff for trees down, crossroads and stuff on that. Under the Office of Emergency Management and Grants, Wendy and I completed 22 EMPG grant, and that has been completed and submitted to Oasis. We have just now received a 2021 EMPG award in the amount of $29,817, and those funds will be split between 911 and County General Fund. And we will be working on the 2023 EMPG as the state releases or goes ahead with the application and stuff. Still working with the state on the approved SHS grant for the radios for the voting precinct polls and the clerk's office. State is still reviewing the radios, may request a different type of radios, so we're still working on that. 2024 SHSG grants should be opening up soon. I think those are coming up within the next week or two for multiple grants and stuff. Not sure what else is gonna fall into those categories yet. That's one that we applied to get the radios for Greg's office, and I think he probably wants another grant or see if we can get another grant since he's gonna be expanding where he's keeping the voter stuff, election stuff for maybe cameras and some additional stuff there. So I'll be working on that with him on that. We will also be doing damage assessments so we can get some of the information from the Forestry Service to come up with a dire figure of how much cost there was involved in the fire here in Hardy County. And currently looking at the 300 NIMS class that will be taught here in Moorefield on the last day of April, first day, and second day of May, so that'll be at the 911 Center. And as far as I know, I think they're gonna have another Wilderness Class, and I have not got that from Roger yet. I think the date's on that, so he likes to have that in spring where it's still cold, because they have to stay out overnight on that thing. That's my report unless you've got some questions.
Have we heard anything further regarding any federal declaration that we may?
They won't until they get dire figures, probably, where they even look at that on that. And of course, it was what, 60-some thousand? The county has to be plus it's, what was it? Was it three or five million for the state? What the counties have been trying to do through Office of Emergency Management, and we've never got the governor to release it and stuff, or legislators to set aside X number of dollars for disasters where it don't meet federal standards. And we've yet to get them to do that with all the money they have in surplus. I don't know why they don't set up some of that.
One of the things that came up as a result of the, of the fires was the the question about our local declaration of a state of emergency. And I mean, what we were, I know what we were working on that night was to make sure that we were providing the information to the governor to get his declaration of a state of emergency for us. I guess my question is that for this event and for future emergencies, do we need to have a form prepared for the County Commission to declare a state of emergency so that then that's shared with the governor, saying that we, as County Commission, think that conditions warrant a state of emergency here in our county, and we're gonna ask the governor to double down and also declare us?
Usually, we do that, and we try to do one for the whole year, because in order to do that, to get the three of you to do it, you'd have a call session. So if we can do it at the beginning of the year for the whole year, saying for any disasters during the year 2024 are covered by this resolution.
As far as any of us, I think, can remember in the, the quick discussions that we've had about the emergency, I don't know that we've ever signed anything or had a motion for anything.
I think we did last year. I'm not sure.
Other than during the pandemic. We did one during the pandemic and had that one, but if we need to do that.
I'll write up one because I should have a copy of the one that's done.
Get that.
Because we're not gonna have that.
We need that in place so that we can move quickly, if need be.
Key points that I got out of our meeting.
Right, from Sandy.
Yes.
It looks better if you do it when it's needed.
Right.
Whereas going a blank at one.
Yeah.
Well, I think we still would be able, I mean, you know, it's serious enough. I think we can take time to come in and have an emergency meeting.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, yeah. And that, it looks like that date for this training that Sandy was talking about, that date won't work. It doesn't look like, at least for me, Dave and I, yeah. So we're trying to, I think he's trying to work with Mineral County to generate interest there so we can set an alternative date, I believe.
That's that G420?
That's for commissioners and stuff, government officials.
Elections.
But maybe you didn't. They had one.
I can't remember whether I took that one.
They had one, I think it may be with it Flatwood several years ago, but they haven't had it for a while. I'll talk to Brent Burger and see if we can get one in Eastern Panhandle. Because that was, that is Flatwoods or going down, wasn't it? Because they haven't been.
The one that they were going to have was over, it's in the Eastern Panhandle.
Um, yeah.
Berkeley. The reason is they were having, they're having the Terry Lively Memorial on that same evening. So Stephen and I are both on the executive board for the Region H.
Yeah, that class, they don't teach enough, and most of the classes that they've been teaching this year is in South. And I'd, and I'd know if all three commissioners has 1, 2, 7, and 8 NIMS. I know you do.
Is there a class being set up for that?
And they're online.
You just do it online?
Mm-hmm.
Send out the link or?
Yeah.
Do you have a website?
Yeah.
Tom?
Question, Paul. My son told me on the phone, I was out west, but there was two firefighters out in Pevil, one from Salinas, California, and the other from Humboldt, California. What were they doing there?
We had two hot-shot teams and a third hot-shot team, so they were probably part of the hot shot. Yeah.
New Mexico, California, and Illinois. Had three hot-shot teams.
And then there was a specialized team in here of incident commanders.
Did they fly in?
No, they drove. I think the ones from California may have been part of the incident command, management team on that, because they come from all of the United States on that. On it, so. And I think maybe local firefighters are a little bit surprised with how they work. Because they can climb the mountain like a belly goat.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And stuff. Anything else?
Now, just.
I thought the meeting was really great that we had, and I know that was the.
We need to do that more.
Hot wash meeting that we're gonna do and follow up when.
And we do have that bus coming in if you all want to look at it.
Okay.
On the 16th at Baker at 6 o'clock.
For the meeting?
Yes.
That'll be during the regular meeting?
LEPC and.
Oh, the LEPC meeting?
17, right.
17?
And that's coming into Baker, that bus. 16 is when the bus is coming in. LEPC is gonna be, yes, on 16.
Yeah, I got that. I have that on my calendar.
LEPC, April 16, what time?
6 o'clock is when the bus is gonna be there out in Hampshire.
Okay.
Communication bus. Yep.
I could change that to share calendar. I already put that in my calendar.
And the M's, M's, they'll meet on 17. Because I'm out of the office starting Saturday until the 12. Baker.
15 is groundbreaking, isn't it?
15 is groundbreaking.
Busy with.
Yep.
April 16.
We lay the levy that day.
The nonprofit security grant that Sandy was mentioning. Is there, you know, are there some things that grant windows will open in April? You see any places we could be working there?
Mostly that goes to schools and to religious.
Yeah.
Churches and stuff, and they have to have an assessment of the building by either sheriff's office, state police, or somebody going through the building and seeing what they're lacking or they might be needing, and that's one of the big things on that. And I have copies of that application. I just pulled it last week. Yes. And there's a lot of money in that grant, but a lot of churches in Charleston, Canal County, and some of those areas down there who receive quite a bit of money on those.
Do you have access to it, Wendy? Do you have, he said he has the application. I'm just saying.
I was gonna say, I've never seen it before, but.
I know that one point. The Victor Believers Church talked about it one time, but I don't know what they did or where they were at with that. Stuff, but especially if they've got a church school and stuff, they probably look at those where they're having classes and stuff for protection of children and stuff. But also with all the shootings and stuff in churches and stuff, they've really been pushing that grant on that. And it's got a pile of money in it from feds on it. So I'll send that down the way. I don't know of any other grants that's opening right now.
Thank you, Paul.
Yep.
Now, Wendy, it's you. Yeah, while you're coming, let's take five minutes. Okay, second. Move and second. We take a five-minute break. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All righty, we are back in session.
We are back in session. All righty. I have, the gentlemen, the commissioners, they do have before them a list of things that I have off the agenda. And. How many do we have on the agenda, please? Sorry. Oh, okay. With that being said, Eastern, the first thing was the Eastern West Virginia Community and Technical College. Thank you. Foundation request, that was from Dr. Megan Webb. She was wanting a letter of support for the college. They are applying for financial assistance for an HVAC welding, solar application, industrial maintenance, CNA, medical assistant, and more. They're, they wanted this letter of recommendation, excuse me, a letter of support for them to apply for that. And also, they have on the back, on behalf of the foundation, there is a list of scholarship levels that if we would want to participate, we could also participate by donating to those causes. That's not on the agenda, but just for letting you all to look, I don't know if Megan had said anything to you, Dave, about any of that.
She had, but she had, like I say, this is the first time I've seen it out in print.
Okay.
I mean, I've heard him talk about it, but, yeah.
I'm making a motion that we do allow support for the Eastern West Virginia Community and Technical College.
Second. Been properly moved and seconded. We address a letter of support for Eastern West Virginia Community and Technical College. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Three ayes. The ayes have it. Motion carries.
The next item is Adam Liller to serve on the Farmland Protection Board. He will be replacing Dennis Funk. What I had received from Dick Gray was it's a four-year term. So I'm assuming that we're using the 1st of April to go, or excuse me, the 2nd of April, I said, to appoint him to replace. Because he was actually, his term was up numerous time ago. I don't know exactly what time.
It's one of those boards where you serve until you're replaced. And so, yeah, Dennis has continued to serve. I think it's two, and then you have to go off. And then, and Dennis has been on for at least two and then some because we lost kind of that paperwork somewhere in the interim time during the pandemic. We lost the paperwork that we needed to figure out whose term was up. And let's see, who took, who was the last one we pointed? Tyler Bradfield to replace Mike Alt. And now Adam Liller to replace Dennis Funk. And that should give us a, that should give us a
Full.
Full, full board for farmland preservation.
I'm making a motion to appoint Adam.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded that we appoint Adam Liller to fill the term of Dennis Funk. Is there any further discussion?
This comes as a recommendation for the board.
Yeah, we basically, it's been recommended by the board to appoint Adam, and we're more or less concurring with that, making it official. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Three ayes. The ayes have it.
I have a resolution from Paul for Telecommunication Week. Dave, do you want to read it, or do you want me to read it?
Yeah, I'll read it. I'll be happy to and most proud after watching them work so diligently here during the fires. It's a resolution, whereas because 911 public safety, telecommunications serve 24 hours a day, seven days a week, just the same as firefighters, law enforcement, and emergency medical workers. And whereas 911 public safety telecommunications make the same sacrifices in their personal lives as firefighters, law enforcement, and emergency medical service workers by leaving their families, friends, and the safety of their surroundings to handle the emergency 911 calls that save lives, protect property, and ensure the safety of our community during weather, chemical, and other emergency events. Whereas 911 public safety telecommunications heroically answer 911 emergency calls around the clock whereby they give medical guidance, instruct callers on safety. calls around the clock whereby they give medical guidance, instruct callers on safe, staying safe in difficult situations, and help callers to safety during disasters, all while properly dispatching field first responders to set emergency situations for the callers. And whereas nine-one-one public safety telecommunications must handle the stress of answering over a half a million calls each year, one call after another daily, often being the voice on the other end of the call as citizens experience the worst days of their lives. They hear the cries of devastation, listen to the screams for help, and are the support as citizens cope with the loss of a loved one. Public safety telecommunications handle, handle all this at the same time, uh, that they have, or that they help their fellow emergency responders in the field stay safe. And whereas to honor the men and women who serve in this crucial, crucial position, we recognize these individuals throughout Hardy County by proclaiming to consider them first responders, and now therefore be resolved by the Hardy County Commission. Uh, we proclaim April fourteenth, twenty twenty, twenty twenty, April fourteenth through twenty, twenty twenty-four as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week to honor the men and the women whose diligence and professionalism help keep our county and citizens safe, adopted this day by the County Commission of Hardy County.
I was making motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt the resolution for Declaration of National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April fourteenth through twenty. Any further discussion? Hearing none proceed to vote, all those in favor, sign five, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I have a resolution, which is also in your handouts, um, to apply for a local cybersecurity grant through the Office of Emergency Management and FEMA. That's the grant that we, um, that I worked with GST to, um, they did an assessment of what, um, we needed first and foremost, Cannon Wadsworth, I think is the gentleman's last name, um, him and I worked together with that, and that was submitted through the Oasis, um, software program, so of course we haven't heard anything, but, um, let me see, Dave. Yes, that is correct.
Okay. All right, this resolution is to authorize the application, the Hardy County Commission to apply for state and local cybersecurity grants, um, basically as Wendy's described it, uh, it's our, uh, assertion that we support, uh, the applications that'll go forth to support, uh, this effort for cyber, cybersecurity. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion that we adopt the resolution.
So moved, second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none will proceed to vote, all those in favor, sign five, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it.
And then, um, the Region Eight, the Hazard Mitigation Funds for fifteen hundred dollars, is that set aside from the budget?
I think that's in the budget.
That's in the budget, is that correct?
For support for Region Eight.
Is it not?
Not, okay.
Okay. So, I have before me, um, the Region Eight Planning and Development Council at a February fifteenth meeting voted to continue to request that local government, um, fund the council. Um, it's, the council voted to request one dollar per capita based on the twenty twenty census. The portion of the council's funding requested from Hardy County for the period of July first through the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five will be eleven thousand five hundred and six dollars. It should be noted that these funds are not due until after July first, twenty twenty-four. That's what's in the budget, is that correct?
This part is in the budget, that's what he's missing.
Yes.
The fifteen hundred isn't, but the reason that's not in the budget, because we just received this during the last year, the fifteen hundred, so, yeah.
I don't have a formal request for that, for the fifteen hundred yet.
Just to end this record.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay.
We need to tell them they need to send the bill, that's what we need to do.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want me?
This, this is not, I, does it make a difference that this is not the most updated census that we have?
I wondered that myself, but.
I mean, this is based on the twenty twenty census, should we clarify with?
That's not their census, their first, it's more fifteen or above, this is a hazard mitigation.
Right.
We budgeted eight thousand, eighty-eight hundred or whatever it was based on population. Reason after, using population for that, Terry?
Yeah, this one here is, the portion of the council's local funding requested, uh, for July twenty twenty-four to June thirty, twenty twenty-five is eleven thousand five hundred and six dollars based on, uh, the twenty twenty, uh, census, one dollar per head, or one dollar per person.
That's not, is that what you called it?
So the fifteen hundred dollars was the hazard mitigation.
Right, that was a different.
And this was something that we have budgeted for.
That's perfect.
Should, yeah.
It is.
But that, but I'm wondering why they're using the twenty twenty census rather than the twenty.
That's kind of, they, that's up to them, I'd say.
Well, okay.
Uh, I mean, uh, Region Eight came up with that number.
I remember the other day at the Region Eight meeting, you know, all that stuff was way back, it wasn't current.
Yeah, it was not the current, it was not the current census.
It was the place.
Yeah, so that's, you know, this is the twenty, I guess that would be at the twenty twenty census. Okay.
But that's to let you guys know, the hazard mitigation, like, I guess Greg said that we'll get a bill for that, and I have not received anything for that as of yet, but that is budgeted.
Yeah, well, are we?
Are we going? One of most people about.
Right, that fifteen hundred to go on the, on the bills, but this one here, do we need a motion to do this, or we've already budgeted this?
So don't need.
So we don't need a motion on that, right, okay, we're good.
Just to make sure, and then the next one was, uh, fair housing, April is fair housing month for, um, for the nation and West Virginia, Region Eight has submitted a fair housing resolution, they would like for you guys to sign as well. Um, that's in your packet, Dave.
Yeah, I got it, and it, it looks like it just requires the signature of the president, president after the motion from the commission to approve this, uh, fair housing resolution has been made.
I second the motion.
It's been properly moved and seconded that the County Commission of Hardy County adopt the fair housing, uh, resolution, which, uh, is in support of fair housing for citizens of Hardy County and in support of the Title Eight Civil Rights Act nineteen sixty-eight, making it illegal to deny a person housing based on their race, color, religion, sex, national origin. Any further discussion?
We do this every, we do this each year.
Each year. Hearing none will proceed to vote, all those in favor, sign five, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, three ayes, the ayes have it, motion carries. Today is four-two.
And then we have a request from Olivet Cemetery, that letter is also in your paperwork, your handout there.
Is that letter included in the amount?
Um, I didn't.
I put it back at that letter.
I did not see an amount.
They don't list an amount?
No, they just talked about the, um, area, the five crucial areas that, um, are items, the big ticket items outside of their budget.
Did they contact us with an amount? I don't know how you can, like, how you can.
They have not.
Request with no amount, I don't, I don't.
Do you request a town? Say it again? Do they request funds from the town?
I don't know.
I didn't know if you're in there or not.
I'm wondering if they request anything last year.
They, they request, I'm most sure we didn't do anything, because.
We didn't do anything.
When you open the door for one, you open the door for all.
Yeah, and all of these cemetery, community cemeteries are struggling.
Yeah.
Big time.
So, I, and, um, are you going to vote to just deny or say table it to get it now?
Right, if you want to table it for here in the mound, that's fine, but I, that'll be fine, I'll make a motion to table to.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded that we table the request of Olivet Cemetery for financial assistance to do some upgrades.
Let me find out.
To the cemetery.
Requested anything, not.
All right.
From the county.
Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none proceed to vote, all those in favor, sign five, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Is that the field levels, it is?
Yeah.
Um, letters of support for the Moorfield Volunteer Fire Department for funding for a new ladder truck and construction of a new building, um, I needed to get some information from Doug as far as who, I'm having fire company, um, volunteers they had on their roster, so I have those, as soon as I get that in the letter, I'll have you guys to sign that so Fran can get that submitted for both of their projects.
That's great.
Yes, which they desperately need.
I'm making a motion to support a letter for, you want two separate ones or the all in?
Yeah.
We need.
All in one?
No, they want two separate.
They need, Fran told us two separate letters.
You can, we'll take later.
Okay.
Well, this advice that actually come from the senators.
We'll vote for both of them, if you all figure out how you want to, if you want to separate one of them or one.
Yeah.
We'll take two, because I think what it is, it's the directional.
Directness, yeah.
And ones will be three mentioned, will be two kept there.
Yeah. They thought, and the advice we received from them is that it would be better to do it, um, their person said, told us to do it like that, because it would give us a greater chance, you know, maybe, because.
Figure out how many you need, we'll give you these mail addresses.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Fill in the blanks.
I make that motion.
Uh, we have a motion and a second to support Moorfield Volunteer Fire Company's efforts to gain a support for a new fire truck and a new station, uh, to whoever and however many are needed, uh, once we secure that information from the fire company. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none proceed to vote, all those in favor, sign five, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, three ayes, the ayes have it, motion carries, and, uh, you're working on that already.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah.
And then, um, another letter of support, it's been a letter of support writing, um, ordeal, I have a letter of support, um, for the, um, the Robert Higgins House.
Yeah.
Um, they, this, Michelle Reeves actually asked me if she could get another letter of support, they submit a grant application through the Division of Culture and History, the Preservation Office for that particular, um, home for the Hardy County Visitors Bureau, um, Convention and Visitors Bureau, so I just need approval to submit that to.
All right, I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion to support the Convention and Visitors Bureau in their effort to seek money and resources to improve and upgrade and finish out the Robert Higgins House as their site, uh, for the Hardy County Convention and Visitors Bureau, County Visitors Center. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none proceed to vote, all those in favor, sign five, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, three ayes, the ayes have it, motion carries.
And just to give you guys a little update, um, we have received the invitations for the groundbreaking for the Health Department, which is April the fifteenth, um, I have mailed out some of those invitations, um, and if you all have anybody, I did send you all a list yesterday of the invitees that I've sent invitations to, if there's anybody that you want to add, just let me know and I'll get those, we actually, I have them in a digital format that I can email the invitation or actually just show it regular, um, postal.
Yeah, yeah, um, no, that's good, and because of that date, which is on the agenda, uh, the seventeenth is going to be the, um, uh, the day because of the young people coming in, you know, we're sponsoring young people to come in to.
Uh, the job shadowing.
Job shadowing.
Okay.
Um, so I know we have one volunteer for that so far, um, our Sergeant Clark is one to be doing that, and that'll be like from nine to noon.
Right.
Hoping, hoping our county clerk.
County, it'll be here.
Our county clerk, seventeen.
That will be, what time, we're going to be here at nine o'clock?
When they come in May, maybe.
No, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, they might, they might not be able to keep up with it.
All right, so are we, we having a special meeting then on the seventeenth at nine o'clock?
Yeah.
We have a special meeting.
Special meeting.
Seventeenth at nine o'clock.
And that's in celebration of National Local Government Month.
Yeah, National Local Government.
Right.
Okay.
It's April?
Yeah.
Now I have to send, I need to send.
Each day, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen.
Yep, groundbreaking on Monday, land levy on Tuesday, and then the Baker meeting to see that calm trailer Wednesday, the Local Government Month Declaration, and then, uh, Thursday, solid waste.
Yeah, they have four students coming from Moorfield Hospital.
Good deal, all right. All right.
I'll shoot it to you. Yeah, um, speaking of the national, excuse me, the, um, County Government Month.
Yes.
Um, did you guys see Megan's email, um, from the CCAWV about the local essay contest that they are hosting?
Yeah, I did, I did see that, and, um, really need to see if, you know.
I was.
Be pushed in Hardy County schools.
I was somewhat disappointed last year because I advocated for that a lot, and I didn't get anything.
Yeah.
And there are great prizes, I mean, like, they offer first and second, third, plus honorable mention, whoever's, um, letter is first, their teacher gets a monetary, last year it was five hundred dollars, they didn't list the amounts this year, but, um, I'm assuming that it will be, you know, a nice prize, that the teachers can use that for in their classroom supplies for their students, so, um, I don't know if you want me to go at it again, or if you guys want to promote it, I just think that, you know, it's something that they should take advantage of because, you know, it is important.
They sent printouts with that, right? Did they have like a printout that you get the teachers, they did, right? Okay.
Yes.
Like, we should give, we should maybe take on responsibilities of who will do what, I, I can get it pushed at East Hardy.
Okay, I'll take care of it over here.
Okay, definitely, I'll print that out.
Who are you going to go to at East Hardy?
I'm going to go to Adam Simmons, he'll be a good one to push that, uh, Jeannie Brown, Jeannie Miller Brown, um, and Henry Hart Hodges, I'm going to go to those three at East Hardy.
All right.
Because we should be able to have some winners come out of Hardy County.
Oh, you'd think.
Thanks for his kids in the state and this county. Did you know that, right?
We were, we, uh, the National Commander of the American Legion in Elk, the young lady from Elk, the horse parade contest.
Yeah.
No one else submitted, she won.
I'll see what I can do.
Wow, wow, that's, yeah, you gotta, you gotta, you gotta, you gotta compete, you gotta do it, you gotta show up, that's right, yeah.
At one time I was told they were putting, they had it in the bank, because they were trying to find.
We didn't show up, we didn't, we didn't go out and compete.
To complete. Um, okay, we got an invitation for the Fourth of July Parade, um, it's actually like, I think, July sixth, if you guys want to do it, I know we'd already discussed this, but just wanted to remind you guys, um, the insurance renewal for West Virginia Corp. was submitted for our twenty twenty-four, twenty-five policy year, I have not received anything yet as far as what, um, our new rates will be, but as soon as we get those, I'll have that on the agenda.
Okay.
And then Morgan reported, Morgan C. reported the gym usage for the Health Almanac Center, and she also said that, um, there has been two thousand three hundred and ten dollars used so far.
Good.
And I think that is. And I think that is, oh, and we also got a thank you note from the Cape and Valley Volunteer Fire Department for their allocation for the $28,557. There's a thank you note for there. And we received information yesterday for a grant that we received for $10,000 for the County Clerk's Office for Record Preservation from Governor Justice.
Nice.
Good deal. Have we, have we heard anything from Governor's office regarding the groundbreaking?
Have not. I know that I've talked to Malley to see if she has some contacts. I have Rebecca, the, I can't think of what her last name.
Wayne.
Yes, I have her contact information to send her, I mean, I can send her, just say, hey, look, this is.
Um, I'll tell you what, also Doug and I are hoping to be talking to Brian Abraham today.
Okay.
We'll put it in, we'll put a word in with, we're talking to him about something else, but we'll put a word in about that to him.
Yeah.
So, because it can't hurt.
No, not at all.
Yeah, we certainly want to make sure that he knows he is, he is most welcome and that we do appreciate his support to get this project done.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, definitely. So everything so far, I'm, I wanna see, talked to Mrs. Slack. She has a group of kids at FCC LA. They're gonna do maybe some like light refreshments for us, but really things, hopefully the weather cooperates, it actually looks really good.
Good.
So I'm very pleased with how things are coming along.
Good deal.
Just getting the RSVP backs, RSVPs back is gonna be the big thing.
Right.
And then do you have Colton's, that's the only other thing that I had.
That was the estimate for the removal of the building, Jefferson Street.
For the dilapidated? Building.
Right, he, he estimated the amount at ten, well, that plus the tipping fee for the thing. Did you see that?
Yeah, I should do it. Sixteen thousand, right?
Yeah.
I think I can get. No, he did one for here too. Yeah.
George Colton.
I have.
Well, that was out of us. We have that. That was ours. He didn't complete that, that was totally ours.
Now that was us. Right.
But his was. Well, we don't. Well, you don't know, you know.
Right.
He estimated sixteen thousand. But George had, did he figure what that would be or not?
Yeah.
That's still his estimate or not, that's still low key.
Yeah.
So what we need to do, we need to take our bill and.
We need to. Well, we need to, yeah, we need to review those. Okay, with that, the next.
Dave, did you sign that fair housing resolution?
You know, I did. I think I handed it to, that I had that fair housing resolution to Greg Ely.
Yep.
Okay, yep.
And then earlier that was mentioned about the Potomac Transit Authority for the, for Greg Greenwald to serve. I have that form. It doesn't say anything about a signature, but Dave, if you wanna go ahead and sign it.
This one here?
Yes.
So just go ahead and.
I just maybe sign it somewhere.
Okay.
Mr. Pixler didn't indicate that it needed a signature, but we also, I saw that Jaybird's name is still present, and I asked him if that would be a problem because I thought maybe he might want a new one, and he said it wasn't a problem, so. And then I'll have just the Adam, your Adam Liller.
Okay.
For that, and I'll get you to sign that after.
Sounds good.
All right.
Clerk Ely, it's you.
Three times. And there's like two more. I'm requesting signing state budget revision this month, so we get that squared around this call.
All right.
I'll make a motion.
All right. It's been properly moved and seconded. We allow the county clerk to sign the state budget revision to do this month. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none proceed to vote. All those in favor, six, five, saying aye.
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 Three. Send that this revision says that state.
Okay.
That the clerk be allowed to sign.
Yep. All right.
I can just do it.
All right, well, you've got the motion and.
Letter, uh. I got the amount for the ambulance EMS salary enhancement funds.
Okay.
After I took the 10% out.
Right.
So the 10, the original amount is $143,763 minus 10%, it's $129,287. Now be allocated to West Hardy EMS. We had 1,411 calls, ACAA 984, and Wardensville 320. And those total 27,15 calls, and that's proportioned out. West Hardy gets 67,191.25, and CAA 46,857.68. Wardensville gets 15,238. Now, and the letters will state, these are the amounts that are gonna be allocated to you when you finish your forms that we need to report back to the state. When we see those back, then we'll cut them, check, so. There's what you need to do to get this checked.
Okay.
Sure, sure, no, that's really good, Greg. And I have it in front of me, that's before the 10% was taken out. I wanna ask you a question though, and mention something on this, because I've had two, like kinda working group meetings with West Hardy and ACAA, you know, just trying to move forward on, that's one thing he mentioned with being part of MSAC now and trying to fight for legislation at the state level. The meetings are going really good, but we talked about this funding in the meetings. And we have invited Wardensville now, so Becky Fischel, I believe, is who is gonna attend this. We have one already scheduled for April, and I believe it would be her that would attend. But there's something to consider as part of what is being given here, and that is that Wardensville was not paying what, when this bill was enacted and approved. And, you know, it's, uh.
Not they're paying.
They are, they are. I just, I just want us to make sure we're settled, I, I, you know, we're settled on how we're doing it, because I know it will be brought up that Wardensville, at that, at the point when the bill was passed and when it became law, they weren't paying. But they are paying now, and they have sent us an email to indicate what they're paying, so.
Well, yeah, we could break the cost, Paul, break the cost from the time they started paying to current. When it gives out. If you want to do that. Or is it the timeframe when we have to issue it out? You wanna, like I say, wait till the next meeting, give you time to hash that out a little bit?
Okay.
Do we know, do we know if West Hardy and ACAA are depending upon this money being allocated at this meeting?
Their problem to.
To start their salary enhancement?
They're going, they're, they're gonna ask when it's gonna be allocated. I don't, I don't know if it's like necessary for this meeting, but they, they know it has been given to us now, so they're, you know, they're, they are, there is expectation on it, but there's no, there's no timeframe, but.
So if there's a difference there, like Wardensville only.
When's your meeting?
Five thousand dollars. Do you want to?
Seventeenth.
Do they know what?
Uh, it would be like prorated, like that amount, and then based on the calls to those.
I was gonna say, we, we've got that meeting.
Special meeting.
On the 17th, but your meeting's not till after that, right?
We just, we set that up at nine o'clock.
Yeah.
Well, I could talk to them, I can, you know, just make sure, talk with them before that meeting, that way we could put that on the agenda for that meeting.
Yeah, yeah, I'll put it on the agenda for this meeting.
Okay.
Find out, and then we probably need to check with whoever, I mean, they're paying now, so those, those funds would have a place to go.
Doesn't say whether they were turned around or not. Code says. Well, we'll just let them hash it out. It ain't gonna make that much difference in money anyway.
Shouldn't.
All right, so you wanna make a motion to do this now, or?
Well, um, we have that meeting, we have a meeting we set up on the 17th. Yeah. And how about I work between then and now, and we can put this on the agenda for that meeting.
Seventeenth.
Yeah.
Put it on the agenda for the 17th meeting, Mr. Clerk, and we'll count on Commissioner Shitram to have the information he needs for us to make a decision on that, at that meeting.
Okay.
All right, sounds good.
Do you have anything else? Anything I thought about, Mr. Workin, you mentioned, there was something, it's not on the agenda. It was about a, something with a settlement. What was that? We never, wouldn't it, do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, that was that suit with the lady that's an attorney that is basically, she disagreed with our thing with her estate, and she's taking it to Circuit Court. Did we also need to designate someone from the County Commission to attend that particular Circuit Court hearing on the estate settlement?
We'll see how we get some of it.
Okay, but we haven't been summoned on that one yet.
Right.
Only on the Mad. Okay. Okay. Yeah.
All right.
Anyway.
Okay.
But we can do that if it's just the County Commission is. Up the week, but.
Yes.
That we're using for these, that, Big Blue.
Yeah.
Who's other guy? Man with robotics.
Robotics.
Right, yeah.
That was from a meeting we attended, Budget Training Meeting.
Yep.
Your command state that we'd like to see those funds used for.
Yeah.
Youth.
Convention.
Yeah, absolutely.
Certainly, certainly would do that.
All right. Mr. President, one more thing.
Yeah.
Then this comes under letters to the emergencies, the ambulance squads. So West Hardy contacted me, they are going to be applying for these, the earmark funding.
Okay.
For their building.
Yes.
They requested that we enter a letter of support for them.
Okay.
For this funding, and I did speak with Wendy to let her know that that call came in. She can work with West Hardy to produce that, but I, I think that it would come in under this letter to the ambulance squads that we can vote to pass that resolution.
Letters of support.
Letters of support.
I'll make a motion.
All right.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. We write a letter of support from the County Commission to West Hardy for their application for earmark funds from our national legislative representatives. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none proceed to vote. All those in favor, sign, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Fassler, are you on board?
Yeah.
All righty, three ayes, the ayes have it, motion passes. Mr. Clerk, anything else? All right, at this time, we've got the minutes from the March 5th meeting, exoneration, settlements, consolidations, payroll register, the payroll register for March 1 through 15 totaled the amount of $10133.65, and the total from the March 16 to March 31 dates and totaled out at $99,764.66. And the farmland preservation monies amounted to $15,660.70. And the clerk's report of wills admitted, executors appointed, and the clerk's report of administrators, curators, and committees appointed in the exhibits marked A1. I'd entertain a motion, we approve those.
I'll make a motion, second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, we approve the minutes and other items listed by the clerk. Any further discussion? Hearing none proceed to vote. All those in favor, sign, five, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, three ayes, the ayes have it. Have we received a copy of the jail bill yet for the month of March?
Not unless.
No.
Okay.
Not yet. All right, as for the meetings that we've already noted again, the next special meeting of the County Commission will be on the 17th at 9:00 a.m., and that'd be Local Government Month recognitions and also some other business. The groundbreaking will be at 11:00 a.m. for the new Health Department on the 15th. The County Commission will meet on the 16th at, is it nine o'clock?
Yes, sir.
To lay the levy.
We have a special meeting on the 16th and 17th?
Yep, back to back.
Back to back.
Yeah, lay the levy on the 16th as per the state code, and then on the 17th, we'll have a special meeting.
What is lay the levy, is that a budget meeting?
It's.
That's where they get the.
Basically, now that the budget has been reviewed and prepared, and both the anticipated revenue and expenditures have been approved and submitted to the state, we will meet on that day to lay the levy, which is the percent that will be laid on the properties owned by the citizens of our county to basically afford to operate our local government.
Okay, and they stay the same.
And they stay the same, so it's the same levy rate.
Same.
Yep. Yep. And you can get those exact figures from the clerk.
I'll call them at midnight.
Yeah, he's got them committed in memory. Levy, yeah, levy page will be published.
Okay.
All right. I see no other business on the agenda to take before the County Commission at this time, but we do have some guests in the room, Rhett, from Congressman Mooney's office, anything you'd like to share?
Well, we shared the grant information.
Yep.
For Wendy to disseminate out to all of y'all, and I'm glad y'all got everything under control with the fires, and Congressman was always ready to help if needed, but you know how that goes, you gotta go through the proper protocols, et cetera, and still, like you said, I've got that emergency schedule.
And. I would say thanks to the Congressman because I did receive a personal call from Congressman Mooney, offering whatever assistance that he might be able to provide for us if we needed something, and, and we certainly appreciated that during, during the emergency. Thank him very much. And of course, we've got the, our town representative here along with our Moorefield Fire Chief, Doug, anything you'd like to share?
Well, you know, I'm not gonna mess it up.
No, you share it, come on.
First, let me say thank you all for your contribution to the fire department. It is greatly appreciated, and we'll use that, probably divide that between the building fund and the truck fund, but we are very appreciative, and I don't hear that enough. The other thing I'd like to say is, during the emergency, I don't think you see this in a lot of places, but you all, in my opinion, you always stepped up to the plate and offered your assistance in anything that, that. and offered your assistance in anything that, that, um, you could do for us, and then we had the after-meeting last Friday, and, uh, I think that's the first one we've had ever in my years of doing this, with, with you all present and everybody else that's part of that, and I really think that we all learned something from that. Um, and, and I think moving forward will even be better than we was this time, so, uh, I, I appreciate what you do for the county and for fire departments and all the emergency responders. Keep it up, I mean, that's, I appreciate it.
Well, thank you for all you do.
Yeah, Doug, thank you for coming, you know, and saying that today, and I want to say, our volunteer fire departments are excellent. You guys do an excellent job, like, um, it's unbelievable, the amount of work you put in for this county. And I do mean you personally. Well, I'll give you an example. Uh, there was someone who came in on Saturday, and Doug was around town on Saturday, and he came in so he could fill this person, and this was a state person, uh, in on what had been happening, and, you know, well, we also talked to him about some funding issues, and we'll make a call today based on that, but just, just the amount of work and the amount of input that came at that, uh, with hot wash, hot wash meeting is what Sandy called it, but the amount of input that was given there, uh, I mean, it was excellent information about some things, you know, like, I think everyone agreed, just like you said, our county did an excellent job in facing this unprecedented.
Emergency.
Emergency. Um, but at the same time, there was talk, and it was in a very positive way, it was just that, you know, you realize when you're in those situations, there are certain steps you can take, and it will even improve your performance, and that, there was a spirit of cooperation there, um, and I think it was really great. Like, we have, we have really good people in Hardy County, it's like really good people, very competent, very hardworking, and it creates something special, and I really appreciate what you do to foster it, because, like, you're involved even at the state level with the Fire Board. Um, you guys worked to help pass, you know, some of the recent bills that were passed in our legislature, which we want to see more, but you worked on that, like, for months leading up to that.
Years.
Years, yeah, years leading up to that, so I just want to make sure that that's it, because it's, it's.
I think one thing, too, just to add on, the community on, on both sides of the county, it's not one side, on both sides, I mean, we, we've received stuff that you would never dream of, from, from socks, and I used some, I can tell you that, uh, but, I mean, just everything you could think of, food, socks, sports gloves, towels, I mean, it was, uh, phenomenal.
Yeah.
And Facebook has a lot to do with that, there's no doubt about it. Having said that, there's a downside to Facebook, it just depends on who's running.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, but, I mean, really, the community and everybody just stepped up, and it's, it's unbelievable, and I have people from Charleston calling, "Man, you okay?" You know, but I think that's pretty cool.
Yeah.
I appreciate everything everybody's done to, to help make it a success.
Yeah.
Could've been a lot of work.
Yes.
And you sit up there, we all are, a lot of times it's all rock and there are roses, so it's good to get some roses.
Yeah, it is.
Because like I always said, you know, once a swearing ends over the swearing act commence.
200%.
And, and I've been on several, uh, board commissions myself, and a lot of folks just don't understand, it's, it's one of these things, when you're scrubbing your head in the shower and you're having a great time, I'm sitting here going like, "If we don't get that $2,000, $2 million, where, how are we going to get it? It's going to blow up the budget." I mean, they, you lay in bed and you think about stuff like this in, in your spare time and, and worry about stuff, so it's, it's another full-time job. It is.
When you see, as the chief said, is when you see the outpouring of support from the community, when you lay your head down at night, you can say, "I'm thankful that I live in this community."
Well, you're entrusted with their funds and everything else. He's sending somebody into burning buildings.
Absolutely.
I mean, you know.
Absolutely.
Now, that's why I always encourage people, please feel free to always, uh, get, uh, elected official position that gives you a heck of an education, just like with the levy question, I mean.
Absolutely, it does.
Yeah.
Y'all do a great job. That's why when they told me, Rhett, you're going to be going back over to Hardy County, I was going like, "Awesome, those are my kind of people, I love it, I'll be over there anytime." Of course, I say about all my counties, too.
Yeah. We, we got you covered, Rhett.
You had us built up so high there.
Yeah, well, you know, I would never want to make a decision as to which county I have, because let me tell you, uh, everybody's unique in the room, they are wonderful.
Yeah.
They are wonderful.
There are, there's.
Makes you proud to be a West Virginian.
Yes. Yeah, it does, it does.
No better place to be.
Yeah.
And you don't want Wendy mad at you.
That's true.
Train.
Oh, good, yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Phil, anything you'd like to share?
I like what they say, you've got a great group of people around here.
Yes, we do.
I work outside a lot, I just can't imagine going out there and I'm in with y'all, but I'm just a trainee.
No.
But everybody across the whole state is a great response.[1787.66]